We have a briefing from staff on ADUs. Is that the next item? Is staff ready?
Yes, Chair. We have Mr. Brent Lloyd, who will be presenting that item at this time. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Brent Lloyd, DSD Development Officer. And we're here today just for a very short briefing. I know that a lot of commissioners and people from the community are eager to hear about staff's progress on some of the code amendments affecting missing middle and housing in general. And so we want to just check in at a very high level. And we want to really, I think, principally focus on Site Plan Light, which we hope to deliver part of to you to codes and ordinances very soon. So I will just begin. So Site Plan Light has a long history going back to affordability unlocked when council, in the initial resolution, I believe it was, in 2018 or 2019, directed that there be amendments included that would facilitate site plan review on a more expedited streamlined basis to facilitate delivery of affordable housing product. That was ultimately tabled as part of the code rewrite, and a lot of great work was done in that process to try to come up with sort of a middle ground set of requirements between, you know, what would apply to a single-family home on the one end of the continuum and full site plan on the other. The goal of this effort is really to find a middle ground that accommodates a missing-middle style product. In demise of the code rewrite, staff has worked to try to fashion requirements for today's code, and that work remains ongoing. Recently, more recently, council passed a resolution that was very specific to make up to four units approvable simply through the building plan process. And that was a more robust relaxation of standards than was actually included in the code rewrite. And so that's a positive for housing. And we expect, as I mentioned, to have that at codes and ordinances very soon, within the coming weeks. And so commission will have a chance to weigh in on that in the very near future. And the harder part is the modified site plan process that's truly the Site Plan Light for projects of five to 16 units. And that would be subject, again, to a more streamlined set of regulations than full site plan. It will include basically modifying some drainage standards and water quality standards so that we, again, have more mitigation and more protections than would apply for single-family home review, but less than the full range of land development code requirements that are triggered when a full site plan is required. And again, that work remains ongoing, and we're confident that with the recent creation of, by the manager's office of what we're referring to as the Code Cabinet, which is an interdepartmental team of people that are meant to really collaborate and work together to move code amendments forward, we're hopeful that we will have the difficult, challenging work done to bring this forward in the very near future. It will follow the easier part, which is just the four units building plan review, which, again, should be coming to you very soon. On the easy part, the four units building plan review, we would basically be adding a new site plan exemption. The one that's there now is currently limited to just one and two family, and this would expand it to four units. And we would also include a provision that limits it to sites that contain no more than four units. We don't want this to be used on multifamily sites as a way to aggregate it and essentially create large-scale developments where no site, by evading site plan review. So we always, when we work on these proposals, put ourselves in the shoes of the tricky actors that will try to, you know, get as much as they can from it. And so we've included some appropriate protections, and we've worked through the language with our law department, and we're confident we'll have that to you soon. And so we want to talk about ADUs. ADUs are very, very important to council and the community, and our work on this remains ongoing. And I want to emphasize at the outset that some of the direction that council provided earlier, while very forward-thinking and well-intentioned, is challenging to implement. And so we anticipate in the coming weeks, as we, there's going to be a briefing in May at the Housing and Planning Committee, and we're going to be dialoguing more openly with council about some of the previously initiated code amendments and what the current priorities are. So I want to, I say that in the context of some of the ideas that we're going to just touch on at a high level may change. Probably some of them will be repackaged and take a different form, and some of them may not be brought forward in any form. But I think, given, given that we have two resolutions and there's a lot of interest in this item, we want to cover some of the broad concepts that staff is working through. So the first resolution in 2021 was to basically permit ADUs in SF1 and SF2 with the preservation incentive, provide a streamlined definition of ADUs, remove the prohibition on garage conversions, and allow, consider amendments for SF3 properties. The second resolution from 2022 was basically to regulate ADUs entirely as an accessory use. Our current code is a little bit of a patchwork. We have guest houses and onsite worker housing and accessory apartments that are in the accessory use parts of the code, but then the main driver for ADUs in Austin is the two-family residential use, which is a principal use. So the reader of our code is confronted with having to flip through a lot of pages, and one is left scratching their heads. And so I think the goal here was to sort of consolidate ADUs within the accessory use part of the code, eliminate parking for projects within a quarter-mile of transit priority networks, Imagine Austin corridors, and allow for administrative modifications to facilitate ADUs where construction is difficult based on site conditions, utility easements, heritage trees, things that oftentimes prevent sites from developing consistent with their zoning entitlements. Is there a way that we can essentially allow some automatic administrative flexibility in those cases? And again, these ideas remain under review, and we will be recalibrating as necessary in the coming weeks as we have a chance to dialogue with our city council and with the law department and other staff as well. But in essence, the proposal would be to revise the code structure, as I mentioned, and consolidate ADU regulations in a single location, have a new section that's entirely devoted to ADU regulations with definitions and requirements, including the preservation incentive, and revisions to some of the basic standards for accessory dwelling units, which we'll talk about in a second, and then the parking piece as well. So the guest house and onsite worker housing ADU types are problematic. Some of the restrictions that speak to the use and occupancy are difficult to enforce. And so the proposal, and this was, I think, consistent with the resolution, is to remove those. Revise accessory apartments to potentially facilitate what many cities refer to as internal ADUs, and this is essentially living space that's contained entirely within a principal structure, doesn't have the look and feel of a duplex or an attached ADU, but really is contained within a structure. Remove the limitation on garage conversions and remove the age restriction that is currently in place for accessory apartments. So this would make use of the provision that we already have on accessory apartments, but include some significant limitations and also remove the age restriction. And then adopt a new set of ADU regulations that improve upon two-family residential use and include incentives for preservation of existing structures. So the proposed ADU regs, which, again, remain under review, and I think there's a lot of good work on staff's part that's been done, but there's a lot of further review that's required, including with law and with other affected departments. But the essence of the proposals would be to remove the zoning separation requirements between units and simply have fire code separation requirements so that if you have detached ADUs, you can build them as close together as the fire code would allow. Remove locational restrictions that limit where you can place an ADU relative to the principal structure. We hear from a lot of people in the community that that's a restriction that effectively limits properties that otherwise could have ADUs from having ADUs even when they have an adequate lot size and they could fit it within the, outside of the setbacks, they have enough impervious cover, but because of the location of existing structures, there's an obstacle. Potentially, and again, this is a requirement that I think is still under discussion, but allowing smaller existing structures to count as an ADU in a new structure is the primary. And I see several of you nodding your heads. That is a requirement that, that comes up where people have an existing structure that they'd maybe like to keep. Maybe they'd like to have parents move into it or something like that. But if that is counted, if that is counted as the principal structure, then they're limited to building a new structure that's 1,100 square feet, and that a lot of times doesn't pencil out economically or doesn't fit with people's life goals. So we are exploring, exploring the idea of some more flexibility there, and what that exactly looks like remains under review, but I think we'll find a way to speak to the concerns that are, that exist with respect to our current requirements. Eliminate parking ADU requirements within a quarter-mile of TPNs, activity corridors, served by transit, or an Imagine Austin center, and potentially allow relaxed setbacks and tent requirements where trees or utility easements or erosion hazard prohibits reasonably-sized ADUs. This is another tricky provision. It was directed by council's 2022 resolution, and it was, a streamlined version of it, I think, was included in the code rewrite as well, but it's something that remains under review and requires, I think, a little bit more refinement. But it's an idea that we are, you know, committed to working on and hopefully have something that is responsive to it. The preservation incentive is another component that is challenging, and there's a lot of good intention behind it to basically incentivize people to preserve existing structures that have an inherent level of affordability. This is my last slide.
Okay. Commissioners, any objection to another two minutes if needed? Okay, thank you.
Inherent level of affordability, even if they're not fully historic, by allowing some degree of additional bonus development for ADUs, just by virtue of preserving the existing structure. We've received a great deal of stakeholder feedback on this, and there's a lot of interest in it. So staff is exploring the possibility of a two-tiered approach. And again, this is a provision that remains under review, and I think will be discussed further in the coming weeks, but I wanted to daylight these concepts and let the commission know that the staff team is working hard on these proposals, and we will continue to check in with the commission as the, hopefully, the proposal takes, takes shape and we can bring something to you in the fairly near future. So, any questions?
Thank you. Are we posted for any Q and A on this item?
Chair Commissioner Lleyce on Andrew Rivera, yes, that's part of your roles for.
Yeah, I think there might be some, but commissioners, let's keep it at eight at five for now. Who would like to go first? Commissioner Mouchetaller?
Hi, thank you for the update. And Brent, you may have noticed I've reached out to you a couple of times. It had Chair Liaison, Andrew Rivera also reached out to you. We actually have a working group formed for this, and we've been trying to get those meetings started so that we can all collaborate together. So I'm hoping that you'll be able to help us with that since you were able to make this evening.
Sure. If the working group is formed, we can certainly, we can certainly attend. I think, again, I think there's going to be a lot of important work done in the coming weeks, and hopefully the staff proposal will come into sharper focus. Some of the provisions I've spoken about tonight remain under review and may change, but certainly we're happy to attend a working group if that would be helpful and answer any questions. And we can certainly also talk about some of the challenges that our current regulations present, which I think many of you have reached out about and are familiar with.
Yes, wonderful. So I'll follow up with another email, and we'll get that going because I think there are people who would like to help shape that. My other question is, how are we going to, obviously, there's, there are, there's bills moving through the state legislature right now, and so one of our thoughts is making sure that what we're working on will fit and meet with state requirements, no matter the outcome of what happens at the state level.
And I'm not, I'm aware of the bill that you're referring to. I'm not prepared to speak to that, and I, I think it's something that we all need to be cognizant of and watch as it moves forward. And we will, I think, have further internal discussions on that, but, but basically, I hear your concern. I think it's a valid one, and we will continue to watch and discuss internally how we can make sure that any proposal that comes forward plays well with whatever's being discussed at a state level.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, one moment. Commissioner Anderson just let me know that he is, when he returns, he's going to need to leave. I just want to make sure we're not going to lose anyone else. We do have a few things we need to take care of, so just checking with, make sure we're going to be able to maintain quorum. Is anybody else? Okay. I mean, we don't have that much left. We have a presentation and then updates. Well, we're going to do some nominations. That shouldn't take long. Okay, all right, just checking. Okay, Commissioner Cox, you have the next question?
Yeah, I wanted to say that I'm looking forward to digging into this on the working group, and it sounds like this is on a pretty fast-track schedule, so I would hope that we could get that working group set up with staff as soon as possible. And I know Commissioner Mouchetaller's been trying to do that, even if, even if things aren't final and still in the works, maybe better than try to push that forward as soon as we can. And I'll just ask one question that's pressing on my mind, and then hopefully dig into this in the working group, but can you speak more to the enforcement of actual use of ADUs? Because I'm always concerned about these things basically just becoming STRs, or it's just kind of a backdoor way to get, you know, a nice work-from-home setup, you know, to one of the McMansions that are sitting around somewhere instead of actually getting smaller-sized, hopefully affordable rental or whatever housing unit. So if you could speak a little bit to that, to that, I'd appreciate it.
Commissioner, I think those are all good points, and I think that those will be a part of the conversation as an ordinance, when an ordinance goes forward. I think that, you know, the, the relative size of the ADUs, there are different considerations as far as like having ADUs that are more geared towards being family-friendly is the term that's used, which I think points towards having larger ADUs, but also your concern about context sensitivity and not having excessive massing is also very, is very relevant as well. And so those are all part of the conversation in developing a proposal, and they will be, when a proposal does go forward, those will all be things that I think can be fairly easily tweaked by the policymakers. But definitely, you know, the community of infill builders as well as the Preservation Austin folks who want to see the Preservation Incentive pencil out do feel that some additional size for ADUs is appropriate in certain contexts. But that, again, that as well as the Preservation Incentive in general remain under review. I feel like I may have missed part of your question, so if there's something else.
Yeah, so I, I'm concerned about how we enforce occupancy and specifically related to like short-term rentals or the ADU's not actually being rented out for, for occupancy, you know, them just becoming an extension of the existing structure. And I was just wondering if you could speak to any of that.
Yes, Commissioner, I apologize. I forgot that part of your question. The ADU restrictions were, I believe, part of the initial council resolution, and we are working on that with our law department and consulting on that. It's a, it's a sensitive area of regulation, and it, but it's one that we know is important to the community, and we're working to determine what is possible through this process to include some restrictions. But other than acknowledging that and saying that we're, you know, committed to working on it, there's really nothing I can say on that. And there are, as far as, I think, the other point you were making about, you know, restrictions on how it can be used and whether, I think there are enforceability limitations as to what staff is able to do, but I think those are all good points, and we will, we hear you, and we'll make sure that those concerns are part of the internal process as we move towards developing an ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick, while we have Commissioner, how much longer are you going to be here?
I'm here.
Okay, I thought you were leaving. I apologize. Okay, I was, got your message wrong. All right, okay, let's go ahead. Chair Cohen?
First off, let me just say, I'm really encouraged by what I'm hearing here, and I think it looks very promising. You guys are addressing, I mean, as you know, half the stuff we hear variance is on right off the bat, so it's either going to like put me out of a job or generate a lot more work. We'll see. We've been seeing an uptick in BOA lately in requests to swap the primary residence from the front lot to the back and bring the ADU forward. Is there going to be anything, I know this is kind of still high-level stuff, but do you guys have any plans to address that?
Yes, that is as part of kind of just the general, looking at the site development standards, the basic ones that apply. That's one of the simpler things that we're looking at. Some of the things regarding the, you know, administrative modifications and preservation incentive, that's a lot of very challenging, difficult issues. But the issue you're talking about is a fairly simple tweak to the site development standards, and it definitely is part of the conversation. And while our proposal does remain under review, I think there's a high likelihood that there will be a provision that speaks directly to the issue you're raising.
Okay, that's great to hear. My other question was, like, so there, there are several repetitive variances outside of that primary residence, specifically dealing with hardships that I thought might get addressed by this, but at the same time, is staff, well, I'm going to hopefully assume staff's taking or making an effort to ensure that this won't start creating new conflicts with like, I know, like, and it's right on 2.10, what is the code where you can't build within 10 feet of another structure unless they're touching? The latter, the latter went down, and this is why I'll have to think of it. I'm just, I guess I'm worried, like, you guys are remembering about us, right? That's all I'm asking. Like, I'm just afraid we're just gonna, this is gonna pass, and we're gonna see like 10,000 cases the next month.
Not entirely sure what you're referring to, but I think that there's a distance requirement, and one of the ideas that, again, we're looking at and remains under review, but it is the idea of not having a distance requirement other than the fire separation requirement. Currently, I forget what the number is, but there's a site development standard that's built into the zoning piece for two-family that imposes something that's more restrictive than the fire code separation. And so I think the goal would be to simply default to the fire code separation requirements, and I'm not sure if that speaks to your concern.
Yes, it does. I'm, I'll find it, and I'll get back with you later.
And please, by all means, feel free to shoot me an email or, you know, reach out.
Thanks.
All right. Commissioner Maxwell?
So, quick question about site plans, if we can go back to those.
Sure.
So obviously, excited to hear that some of this is going to be coming to joint codes and ordinances shortly. I think my biggest question is actually related to the modified, so for that five to 16, you mentioned about doing department, like, how that part would maybe streamline department reviews, which I know have a, have a real, can be a real hiccup in the system. So if that's being considered as part of what we're looking at for the five to 16s and sort of what, what might be involved in sort of really condensing that process? You guys, I don't, if you have details you wanted to share at this point?
I can't share a lot of detail, but I'm, we're very aware of your concern, and we want to make it as easy as possible. And to the extent that we're able to have the requirements be simple enough to where the concerns of some departments are built into the regulations that can be reviewed through the standard process without a separate routing of an application to other departments, that is basically the kind of the guiding philosophy for how we're trying to limit further reviews. It really is, this part of Site Plan Light really is creating a suite of regulations that staff doesn't review for now. Basically, right now, we have building plan, one- and two-family residential, site plan exemptions, which have a few additional criteria, and then full site plan. And this is really creating a middle ground, and it's, it's challenging, and it creates organizational impacts. We have whole work groups that are structured around building permit, site plan exemption, or full site plan. And I think that as a city, it's been, you know, recognized during the code rewrite process as well as in the resolutions that are directing the current Site Plan Light effort, that we need to be less siloed, we need to move towards a more interdisciplinary, collaborative, context-sensitive approach to development regulation, and so we're committed to doing that. It is challenging. And so I think that whatever we do deliver will involve streamlining of different department reviews.
And I forgot to actually start with this, but first, I really want to say thank you to you and staff and everybody who's been working on this. I know that there's been a huge amount of work previously, and then certainly over the last six to eight, 12 months, on all of these issues, and we're excited to see that they're finally coming forward. And that actually leads to my other question, which is sort of sequencing. So it sounds like we might see some of the site plans first, and then I assume ADUs, it sounds like, is the next round of conversations, and then we might see the more bigger site plan. Is that sort of the sequencing you all are thinking about, or is there a particular order that we think we might end up considering these in?
I think that that's reasonably likely. I think that, again, we're having a briefing, a interdepartment, a Code Cabinet staff briefing with council in the Housing and Planning Committee on May 23rd, and I think there may be some, you know, discussion of recalibrating priorities. So with ADUs, it's possible that there will be a simpler approach discussed that focuses on some of what we might call the low-hanging fruit. Some low-hanging fruit is really not that low-hanging, but, but there are definitely some things that are easier than others, and so we'll be having that kind of a discussion with council. But I do think that there, the site plan components are definitely going to be coming forward as soon as we can get them. And ADUs in some form or fashion, potentially revised from what I've discussed tonight, I think we'll be trying to get that moving forward soon as well.
Commissioner Anderson?
Hey, Mr. Lloyd. So I hear the state is hearing more and more about our affordability issues statewide, and they're looking to address this. Is anything that we're doing, you know, are we looking to change our position after the state maybe adopts something, or kind of what is our position there?
Commissioner Anderson, I think, you know, I'm aware of some of the state legislation that you're talking about, but it's, I think, something that we all just have to be cognizant of and watch and see how things develop, but I'm not, I'm not prepared to weigh in on, on our state, on the state legislation that's in play right now.
Cool. So at the, at the Austin Water Building back in 2017, to the first, I believe, still the first vote the Planning Commission made on the new land development code was to promote ADUs. Is everything that we are looking at right now, everything we can do to promote ADUs? Commissioner Maxwell brought up a good point, like, there's just, there's just still all these little things in current code that trip up this property, so they can't do it. This property can't do it because of this, this property, and there's just all these little reasons why we can't build ADUs like we need to in the city. So are we looking to figure out a way to clear away all that nonsense and really promote the construction of ADUs in Austin?
What may be nonsense to one person is an essential protection to another, and I think that the council resolutions provide some guidance, and they definitely don't say remove all regulatory protections to surrounding properties. So we're trying to strike a balance between, you know, allowing, bringing forward a proposal that allows and eases the construction process for ADUs, but also includes, you know, the protection. protections against, you know, too much massing on a property. And, you know, generally abides by the two-family residential regulations as a baseline with appropriate modifications where there, there's good reason to. And I think we've touched on some of those. The placement of structures relative to the principal structure, that's an obstacle that I think, you know, we're committed to trying to improve. And additionally, we all, we also, I talked earlier about the challenges that are presented where you have a small existing structure and you'd like to keep it. But if you, the new structure has to count as your ADU, that creates challenges. So I think there are aspects of our current regulations that we're really committed to trying to look at. Again, review remains ongoing, but we're, I think, optimistic that on some of these points, we're going to be able to make some substantial improvements.
Essential protection versus arbitrary nonsense. As long as we're looking to completely weed out the latter, then I think we're on the same page there. So, thank you.
All right, commissioners, got a few more spots. Let's, let's check real quick. I'll go ahead and since you don't get many opportunities, I'll let you have one more.
So see, sometimes my brain just does that because land, developed land use, this is not my, my forte. I've had to teach myself everything over the past few years. But it's, it's single-family attached is what I was talking about. And the fact that we get variances to go into the setback, the rear setback because of that 10-foot fire code requirement. So maybe addressing both of those together, like, getting rid of some of those requirement, well, maybe not the fire requirement, but like.
We're looking, we are exploring, there, I think, you know, we are looking at ideas for potentially, in certain cases anyway, modifying the rear yard setback requirement under zoning. I think that any modification to the basic health and safety standards for separation that apply under the fire code, I don't think that'll be part of the staff proposal. But I am aware of some of the zoning setback requirements that you're talking about. And so I think that is definitely a part of staff's work in fashioning a proposal. And so I will make sure with, you know, with our team that that gets attention.
Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? I'll just make a quick comment. I'm really excited about both these efforts. Just being, those of us that worked on the earlier land code versions, we put a lot of effort in ADUs and site plan. And so there's a lot of good work. I'm glad we're picking that up and trying to get something done here. These are very important to the city. And I have talked to developers that really wanted to take advantage of the affordability unlocked and not having that site plan advantage really, you know, economically, it kind of pushed it another direction. So I think this will really incentivize much more use of that, that tool. So very excited for you guys to bring this forward.
We hope it will. And I guess one other last point I want to make on that is, you know, the site plan provisions are not an entitlement. So I think initially, the projects that'll be able to take advantage of it will be the affordability unlocked. But if council later down the road considers some sort of a missing middle category, lots of ideas are under discussion, then we will at least have the non-zoning piece, the process piece, ironed out. So we're, we're excited about this proposal and we're drawing on the best ideas of the code rewrite and trying to consider the current reality as well. And so we hope to have, start presenting things at codes and ordinances in the very near future.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, let, if you don't, I think I'd like to take, no objections, it's a quick five-minute break, and we'll come back and hear the next presentation. All right, thank you. I guess come back at, we've got here. Yeah, let's just do a little after eight, 8:02. Thank you. Bring this meeting back to order once we have quorum. I think we just need one more. Okay, we are good. Seven, let's bring this meeting back into order. It's 8:06.